of the city council on the WPCA to order. For the record, it is now 6:34 PM. Today is Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Council members participating in person in City Hall Auditorium are Councilwoman Waldron, Councilwoman Ruett, Councilwoman Cavanero, and participating via Zoom. I have Councilwoman Oliver and Councilwoman Manichia. So that is our quorum. Before we begin the agenda, could we please stand and pledge the flag?
Pledge your name to the flag, United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number one on the agenda is a call for public comment. And I would just remind the council and members of the public that public comments, written comments that are sent electronically are provided to, forwarded to the city council for their review. So for this in-person only public comment, I'll entertain a motion to open the public, open the meeting to the public in accordance with Section 4E of the City Council and WPCA.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. And seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're open to the public. Are there members of the public that wish to address Mr. Candever?
Candever, 1821 Winston Road. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say anything about cannabis tonight. The, what I'd like to talk about is two events coming up this, this September. The first is, involves this citywide cleanup. September 17th, Saturday starts at Cole Park and disperses people all over town. I was thinking that the council members and department heads would be good people who know, will know about areas that need attention. You know, you, you're, like I know the mayors, you know, you got to focus on, you want, you like clean up the high visibility areas, whereas like the Conservation Commission, some of the members, you know, they're focusing on wetlands or close to the rivers and things like that. And, and I'm concerned personally for areas that might be trails or future trails or whatever. So the Conservation Commission is, you know, is preparing a list and of areas to address. And if you know some, then get in touch with Nate and so he can, you know, he could, we could, we could set some priorities there. Now, the, the second item, which also involves the Torrington Trails Group is we are going to assist the Main Street market, Main Street Torrington organization to, as far as providing a group of personnel for setup in this assembly at the Oktoberfest on September 24th. And I just, I think it's, it's a great event. I think the, it's like a, it's almost like the perfect event for the Franklin Plaza venue, you know? So, so it's, so it's just like to put a shout out for that. So you're gonna have, we're gonna have, we're gonna assist the staff that are, Ed Canada has already assembled, or we're gonna assist them to help them make it run smoothly this year. And the, and I'm gonna tie in this, this to the other, other cleanup is, Ed told me that he's arranged for one of the, on a Twilight Express, there's gonna be people, a group of people coming, coming up to the Oktoberfest by train. So that's kind of a great thing. And so I intend to clean up along the train station area all the way down Water Street to make sure that that's, that area is clean and presentable. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Candever. Open to the public still, public comment?
Hi, Steve Iveyne, Westside Lane, Torrington. I just want to comment on housing. I want to thank everyone that's been working on a housing development presentation tonight. My concern is really about the focus on economics. Bring in large housing projects, the tax forgiveness that is asked by these developers to do so is a burden on our city. I want to be conscientious of how we meet that need, but also of pushing out the tax obligation to other segments of our citizens, of our taxpayers. 25% of our citizens are elderly, they're living on fixed incomes. They're telling me that they cannot afford the tax increase. I want to be sensitive to that. So any kind of tax abatement, how do we create a matching economic plan to meet any kind of tax abatement on any kind of significant project? When we say we're going to add 100 students to our school system, Board of Education will have an ask of a certain dollar amount. How are we going to meet that need? So I just want to have that as part of the dialogue for these housing discussions, how we come about housing plan with the economics in mind. So I also want to point out that other cities also have grants to rebuild older houses. Torrington has a very old housing stock. You know, not that we should be throwing them away necessarily. I think a lot of cities would be very happy to have those types of housing, that size, that caliber, how they were made. It could really be an asset to our community. If we could get those kinds of grants and apply them locally, I think that would be a great thing to rehabilitate some of our older neighborhoods and really have people enjoy that era of our housing. And it could lead to other developments in those areas. So thank you very much. And also I want to thank the Trails Group for all that they do to help us develop our trails. And he even tunes into our conservation meetings. So we must have a fan.
Thank you, Mr. Ivey. We're still open to the public if there's public comment? All right, we'll move into item number two on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from August 15th, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, was that Mr. Manichia?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. All right, so motion made by Councilwoman Manichia, seconded by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion by the city council acting here in as a water pollution control authority pursuant to CGS Section 7-250 to set a date of October 3, 2022, for a public hearing for the sewer benefit assessment for properties on Homestead Road in Kimball Lane. I'll move it. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruett, and seconded by Councilwoman Cavanero. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This motion carries. Item four, I'll entertain a motion by the city council to accept the recommendation of the IT Director, Public Works Director, and Facilities Manager to award the contract for the installation of upgraded audiovisual equipment for the auditorium at City Hall to Soundworks and Security of Torrington, Connecticut in the sum of $242,485.90 and to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city regarding the award and execution of the contract agreement. Funding will be from the ARPA funds and IT capital.
I will move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruett. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero. The floor is open for questions.
Let me go first?
Please, yes.
Yeah, what is the city gonna give for over a quarter of a million dollars of audio equipment?
So I thought I saw Jamie, oh, there's Jerry. Yeah. It will look much nicer than this.
Okay. I agree, but it is a quarter of a million.
Hi, there's, there's a few different pieces that are part of this project. When we look at this room, obviously, we could see that the video presentation is lacking. So that was one of the targets. We wanted to improve the video presentation for both, for the public as well as for the members of the council that's seen it today. So it includes monitor displays, mounted up on the ceiling, individual computer systems at each of the seats so that you can see the presentations as well as view other content, agenda and so on. Audio will be updated, so new equipment for the audio. Improved speakers for, for the overhead sound. Video equipment includes new camera and a system set up so they can support Teams meetings or Zoom meetings or, you know, any type of meeting solution. Right now, we're using Zoom. We know that in the future, you know, it could be another product, you know, two years from now. So we want to get a system that's in place that's going to be able to be managed by the clerk at the desk through one management console and be able to provide.
That's fine, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, for that much money, I was assuming that there was a significant upgrade to everything. You know, it's a quantitative leap forward. Okay, that's terrific. I just, out of curiosity, did this remote bid, ma'am?
It did, yes.
All right, fair enough, thank you.
Just a comment, this was, you know, funded by ARPA, which, you know, I think we realized through the pandemic, you know, the amount of technology that was, that we were lacking in terms of really keeping up with, you know, the, the, all of the Zoom meetings or any other meetings that might be there and open to the public. So I think we, we know how much we missed that and I'm excited about it. I do have a question. Will any of it have any portable equipment included in this? Or, you know, anytime there's a presentation outside in front of City Hall, it's, you know, it's a struggle when you're recognizing, most recently, the Purple Heart ceremony that was organized and, you know, some question. Can you throw it in there somewhere?
We could certainly. The basis for the installation is for improving this room, you know, for meetings as well as presentations, because we know it's a multipurpose room. We also want to include a cart that has a display on it that is portable in some sense, not really considered something you bring outside, but within the building. If there's another location that could be utilized.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Yeah. So we won't be having this nice screen anymore. Are we gonna have some kind of permanent mounted screen here in the room?
There'll be two displays facing the audience and then each seat will have a display.
Okay.
Other questions as I look to the screen?
Just nice that it's also awarded to Torrington business.
Yeah. Thank you, Jerry. If there are no other questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And for the record, when I announced attendance, I see that Councilwoman Hona is also online and participating.
Thank you, and just because I didn't listen to that conversation, I am in favor. I think it's okay that I vote for it.
It is.
Although I can say, thank you.
No, we appreciate your vote. Okay, I'll move into item five. This is a presentation on the state mandated, under Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-30J of the Affordable Housing Plan for the City of Torrington. Our presenters this evening are Jeremy Leifer, our city planner, and Jocelyn Eyre, Director of Litchfield County Center for Housing Opportunity. I say presentation because our thought, this is a plan that does need to be approved by the council, but our thought process is we'll make the presentation to the council tonight, give you a couple of weeks to think about it, and then bring it back for a vote at the next council meeting.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. So Jeremy, did you want to do the introductions and Jocelyn, and join?
I just have a, I just have a brief memo to, just to read in before, before I turn it over to Jocelyn. So state statute 8-30J, signed into law in 2017, requires all municipalities to adopt an affordable housing plan every five years. In order to meet this requirement, the city received grant funding for $15,000 and retained Jocelyn Eyre, formerly of the Northwest Hills Council of Governments and currently the Director of the Litchfield County Center for Housing Opportunity as a planning consultant for the purposes of drafting the Affordable Housing Plan. A housing plan steering committee was formed and began meeting in September 2021 to represent residents and housing professionals and to work with city staff and consultants. The committee worked with Jocelyn and city staff to solicit public feedback on housing issues through a survey of which over 500 responses were received. The committee then held a public forum for feedback on March 9, 2022. A draft plan titled City of Torrington Housing Affordability Plan 2022 to 2027 was prepared and presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on August 24, 2022. The Planning and Zoning Commission, at their August 24, 2022 meeting, determined that the Housing Affordability Plan as drafted is consistent with the goals, recommendations, and strategies of the Torrington Plan of Conservation and Development effective August 27, 2019, and recommended forwarding the plan to the city council for adoption. Ms. Eyre will present a summary of the draft plan for city council at this meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission and the city planner recommend that the city council adopt the plan as the official, as the official Affordable Housing Plan for the City of Torrington.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Good evening. So if it's all right, I would love to just highlight and summarize the draft housing plan. Thanks for, for pulling it up there. And again, just take any questions or comments that you have tonight. We have, this has been posted on the city's website for, since I think the end of July, certainly for all of August. And we have also presented it at the, at the Rotary and have received some feedback and comments on it. So again, happy to hear any questions or feedback that you have tonight. So if you could just scroll to page three. I've really enjoyed over the last year, 10, 10, 11 months, working with the steering committee, including Jeremy and Claudia and Sharon and Starlee to work through this process of developing this housing plan. As Jeremy mentioned, in 2017, the state passed new legislation requiring every municipality in the state to have a housing affordability plan. So that is why this is happening. And I am actually also working with eight other municipalities in the region on their plans as well. Again, I will say that for this plan, the focus is really not on, at all on public housing, and it's not on, focused on creating new large developments. Certainly, it is focused, as the speaker mentioned earlier, the city, as you know, has some amazing stock of historic beautiful housing, some of which is vacant or underutilized buildings. So there, a lot of the plan is really focused around, you know, utilizing some of those underutilized spaces, strategies for turning vacant units into newly refurbished occupied units. And really, a lot of the strategies are around just continuing to do what the city is already doing around, you know, again, investing in the neighborhoods and investing in the existing buildings that are there. So if you can scroll to page six. This page of the plan just kind of, again, outlines some of what Jeremy was mentioning in terms of the process we went through to develop it. Obviously, we did some, a bunch of data collection and we just sort of summarized some of that in this housing plan around your existing housing stock and your existing demographics and demographic trends. Again, just to try to think through what your existing housing stock looks like and your demographic trends and kind of what the strengths and weaknesses of your current housing stock is. And then again, to try to sort of target the strategies and goals to, you know, to meet some of the housing challenges that the city has. So we also, as Jeremy mentioned, did a survey both of residents and folks who work in the City of Torrington. And, and then again, based our development of goals and strategies around what we heard in the survey and what we saw in the data. We did, as Jeremy mentioned, present this to Planning and zoning in August. And, you know, the next step in this process, so the, the steps in red here just haven't been completed yet. So that's why they're in red. But the next step in the process is to have the city council adopt a plan. Again, it is required that by, now technically, the statute requires it to be done this year. So that's what we're trying to achieve. And then if you can just scroll through, a lot of the next pages are again summarizing the survey findings and a lot of the data that we collected. Hopefully, you all had a chance to look at that and I'm not gonna go into too much depth. We've got some, again, quotes from major employers in Torrington and how needed it is to just have some more housing options for the folks that they're trying to attract and retain, like the hospital and the Warner Theater. But just to briefly describe, if you go to six, oh, that, that's not what I want. I want 12. Just again, in terms of what you have now, you know, again, a small portion of your existing housing stock that is dedicated, affordable, so will remain affordable over time, is owned and managed by the Housing Authority. That's just the 430 units for, again, for seniors and disabled folks. But a lot of your dedicated affordable units are not public housing. You've got, again, 513 homes in the city that have a mortgage through the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. So that makes, again, homeownership more affordable for those families. And then you've got 328 households receiving some kind of rental assistance again, because that helps pay the difference between market rate rentals and what the, those families can afford. You've got 22 supportive housing group homes and 63 first-time homebuyer homes managed by Torrington Affordable Housing. So you do have a kind of good, you know, diverse range of different options of your existing dedicated affordable housing units. And if you scroll to the next page, you also have a pretty good kind of pipeline of additional units that will come online soon. You all know about the riverfront development. That will be mixed income, which is great. It will have market rate units as well as a range of units for different incomes and, you know, be well-located to, again, create some housing options in the city's center. And then there's also 92 apartments for seniors with a preference for veterans in the pipeline as well. So, you know, as it mentions here, with, with that pipeline in mind, this plan is really not suggesting any specific further, larger developments. It's really, most of the strategies are focused around, you know, again, reutilizing your existing housing stock and investing in your existing housing stock. Just a few points of data sort of in summary around housing needs. You do have over 2,000 households that are paying fully more than 50% of their gross household income on housing costs, which is considered severely cost-burdened. You've got over 1,000 renter households and almost 1,000 owner households that are housing cost-burdened. Again, we're seeing that really county-wide, a lot of cost-burdened households. But that is true here in Torrington as well. There are 156 seniors or disabled households on the waiting list for the Torrington Housing Authority properties, and that waiting list has been closed, I believe, for some time. And then there are also 851 households on the waiting list for rental assistance. So that's just kind of a few data points, again, that we look at when we're thinking about housing needs within, within any, any community. And then if you can just scroll down, you know, we do have a section around zoning analysis around what your, your zoning allows and also a section around the importance of continued preservation of open space. And that, again, that is important in communities as well as housing. But I won't go through any of that. I'm just gonna, again, if you could scroll down to the goals and strategy section. Again, we're kind of emphasizing here the existing pipeline that you have of, you know, new mixed-income, affordable housing in the pipeline. And then focusing on, you know, goal number one, continue to encourage investment in vacant or underutilized properties in terms of creating new opportunities. And if you scroll down to the next page, you know, one of the first survey results that we got when we did the resident input survey was someone talking about the city's terrific stock of historic two- and three-family homes. And, you know, we know that there are a lot of vacant units within those two and three families. So a lot of these strategies focus on, again, invest, trying to invest in those, again, not necessarily, not with city dollars, but bringing in some of the statewide resources, try to use them more, for example, the Healthy Homes Program, and get more resources out to the owners of those buildings so they can make those renovations and get those, those units back online. So I'm not gonna go through the rest of the strategies, but again, a lot of them are about really preserving the stock of dedicated affordable homes that you have and then really doing, you're just trying to do more around raising awareness about what the city is already doing and some of the state programs out there that can help homeowners and owners of these, of these properties that, that need some investment. So with that, again, if it's okay with the mayor, I'm happy to take any questions or...
Yes, floor is open for questions or comments?
I have several, and I'll defer to other people who might want to ask before me.
Any questions?
Well, I just want to congratulate the committee who've been working for a year on this. And when you say you're working with seven other eight municipalities altogether, how many of them are comparable to the population of Torrington and sort of the demographics?
I, I am working with the town of Winchester, but I'm working all in, in Litch, within Litchfield County. So, but most of them are, are quite different in terms of, of the number of the population size and the, and the...
So we've basically, from what I understand, you, you've met, we've met, you know, sort of our obligation. I don't know if that's the correct word in terms of affordable housing, but the investment you're talking about is to provide for all of those that are on the waiting list, you know, other housing opportunities. It's, it's a very detailed work. I, I need to read it more and I'm glad we're not voting on it tonight. But I do think that you've invested, as well as the rest of the committee members, a lot of time on this. And the data, I think, is, is really quite telling to me how much we do do already in the City of Torrington in terms of providing affordability for housing. So that's my only comment, less, maybe less of a question.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero.
A number, a number of things. First, just, just to get, just to get my head clear, and I think this is true for... just to get my head clear, and I think this is true for an awful lot of people who are trying to fully understand the scope and the scale and the consequences of such a plan long-term for Torrington. When you talk about affordable housing, and then you also talk about public housing, and then I hear taxpayer assisted housing, can I get an actual working definition that is true in Torrington, as true in Torrington as it is in New London, Groton, Bridgeport, Simmsbury, and Avon? Can, could you please define those?
Yeah, and it is on page, I think, page three of the, of the plan. But the way that we define affordable housing is the way we use the state's definition, again, because this is a state mandated, mandated plan. So housing that only costs 30% of the income of a household at 80% of the area median income or less is considered affordable.
Okay, so let's just, rightly or wrongly, I still think I'm right on this. I have objected to the Penrose project from early, early on. Based on what I thought, and I still consider to be taxpayer assisted for certain percentage of that house. There are just two things that bother me about Penrose, among other, well, there's more than two, but I, I did not like the fact that when, on the city council, we were first advised and counseled about this project coming forward years ago, we were told that there would be minimal, almost none, no Section 8 housing. And then it became readily apparent to us that apparently once a project like this goes forward, to flip apartments from affordable to Section 8 is a relatively simple thing to do through the state. And in some ways, the state is very amenable to towns like Torrington doing such a thing. That has real consequences clearly in a lot of directions for Torrington. However, I don't want to get lost on that. What I do want to get, what I do want to define is if on a Penrose project, you have apartments 302 and 303, and those are exactly identical apartments, one could be defined as affordable, correct? And one can be defined as market value. Somebody is making that determination? That two identical apartments in terms of space and configuration, one could be market value and the renter there will be paying the market value of whatever, whoever makes the turn. And then one will be an identical apartment would be affordable. And that person would only pay a certain percentage of the market value. Is that correct?
So I can't speak specifically to the Penrose development, but I can say generally within mixed income developments, you would have an apartment, you could, as you said, that was, they were identical. But whether it's affordable or not, again, depends on if, if the household is earning less than 80% of the area median income. And again, a lot of these, a lot of developments like this have a range of income levels. So some folks at 80, some at 50, some at 30. And they would only pay 30% of the, of their income on the rent.
I get that from, I get that from the renters perspective. I'm trying to look at it from the taxpayers' perspective, both as a taxpayer in Torrington and a taxpayer in the state of Connecticut, which I think everybody, you know, feels the taxes are too high, you know, by quite a lot. So again, my question is, if, let's, I'm not asking you to confirm that this is Penrose, but let's just use that as an example. If, in, in a mixed use development like that, if apartment 301 is $1,400 a month for X number of square feet and person, and that person is paying market value, $1,400 a month, the next apartment, oh, next to it is the same footage, same thing, but that has been determined to be affordable housing, that person can only pay, let's say, $800 a month. That delta, what does Penrose get from that second apartment? Do they see $800 a month? What comes to them as revenue as a business? Or do they get $1,400 a month because that's the fair market value? And if they get the 1,400, who is paying that delta, that $600 a month?
So if I may.
Yes.
This affordability plan did not dive into any of the riverfront or Penrose development. So those particular questions are specific to that development? And I'm not sure that Jocelyn is in a position to be able to answer those questions.
How, so how Penrose has been told, I, I've heard Penrose defined as affordable housing unit many, many times, many times.
So I think the question that you're, if I can rephrase the question for you and see if I'm, I'm understanding the question. So your question is, if there is a mixed income development, and that mixed income development is receiving tax credits or credits from the state or the federal government, the question is if a market rate apartment is rented out at market rate and the apartment next doors, the occupants of the apartment next door are only making 70% of the AMI, who picks up the, who picks up the difference? Does the property owner absorb the difference in rental income? Or is there another pool of resources that subsidize the rent?
Is the state or federal government?
Is that the question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so my understanding is that Penrose, you know, has applied to the state for funding that will, basically, the way that these usually work is that you, is that the developer gets funding from Department, the State Department of Housing or CHAF, the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. And that helps with the cost of constructing the unit so that then the rents that are actually achieved at different income levels pay for the ongoing operating costs of the, of the development.
Operating costs plus profit. That's my, that's my question. That's the nub of the question, plus profit.
Yeah, I will say.
Profit enterprises.
Yeah.
That many, many, many people get confused about thinking that they are somehow not-for-profit, government-sponsored enterprises, in a sense, you know? And so the question of who should it really be paying for the profit of a company, an LLC like that? Should it be the state taxpayers or city taxpayers? Or should it be, you know, a true market-driven economy? And the owners of, the owners of that development, they pay for it. And if they upkeep it, and if they develop it, and they, and they continue to keep it, they will continue to get, you know, renters there. And if not, then the taxpayers will. My, okay, so let, let's get, I think you, I think you answered my question. Here's my other thing, is in, what I did not see, so I, I have a problem with some of this because to the, the earlier speaker, Mr. Ithane's point, one of the things that I know from our local Board of Education, I served on the Board, I know those people well, and what they were very, very, very concerned, and continue to be concerned about this type of development, is the fact that there tends to be, and, and there's plenty of data to show that there are, you know, real economic, it tends to be real economic costs as you begin to expand this thing. I don't want to get into the details, but, you know, you have to hire extra teachers, you know, in many cases in town like Torrington, or, you know, for languages alone becomes a, you know, a real added burden to the, to, to the school system itself. And I don't see where the state is indexing the need or indexing those projected costs and, and and reimbursing a city like Torrington for assuming those additional costs. Number one. My other problem, and I don't see with this, is I don't see, for a long time, again, serving on the Board of Education for 10 years, eight years here, I have heard, you know, that Torrington has bent over backwards to, you know, Councilwoman Ruet's point, to provide more affordable housing than we were required to provide, okay? Based on our demographics, and we have long done that. I, I've heard at times it was, you know, double what we were supposed to, and even two and a half times what we were supposed to. And yet we are surrounded by many municipalities and townships that are well below what the state expects them to provide, okay? And I think common sense would, would drive why that is the case. I don't see any teeth in this, right? So these are recommendations for what Torrington owns. What happens, and to your point, and, and thankfully so, I think you have, I think this document shows that we are on the hook for actually, actually a relatively modest amount of, of additional affordable housing, correct? That's, that's, I was surprised by the number. I thought it would be coming much higher. We, because we have this history of, you know, providing excess affordable housing in Torrington, but that would imply that other townships, okay, would have to be picking up their fair share of that burden. What teeth are there from the state to say, well, you know, if you don't do it, here's what's going to happen? Either, is there any mechanism within this plan or as you know, what the state will plan, will do if you don't meet these goals? Any given town?
No.
Great, great.
Yeah, and just to underscore, you know, this is, this is a guidance document. It's a plan and, you know, in the same way that you have a town plan of conservation and development, it doesn't change, you know, just having your town plan of conservation development, for example, doesn't change your zoning regulations. You then have to take the next step. So you know, this is just, again, a guidance document to talk about what the city's housing stock looks like now, what your needs are in terms of your demographics, demographics and your aging housing stock. And again, the recommendations in this plan, as I see it, are really not focused on new developments. It talks about your, you know, my understanding is riverfront is, is pretty much a, it's a done deal, I mean. And in terms of the other development in the pipeline, that's seniors and veterans, so that's not going to bring a bunch of new school children.
Point of, yeah.
Yeah.
On the veteran, on the veterans and seniors housing issue. We've had a bad experience in Torrington with, with a project that was built many, you know, generation ago specifically for seniors. And somehow because of, I think, IDA, IDA laws, you know, it became converted to where, well, I, I was at the Planning and Zoning Commission, the meeting last week about this. And apparently seniors represent only 30%. That's what came up, planning and zoning. 70% of what used to be senior housing is now for largely Section 8 housing. And, and I can't speak specific to it, but there was a point, there was one time when I actually ran for state representative, and I did a lot of door knocking within that building, and I was actually shocked and completely frustrated and, and dismayed by what has become of what was supposed to be a safe haven for seniors. What in all of this will protect seniors so that if we build for seniors, it will stay seniors?
I guess I would defer to Claudia to speak to that, if that's okay with the mayor or.
Hi, Claudia Sweeney, Torrington Housing Authority. The, the, this plan is not meant to say that the projected plan for the senior development will even happen. I mean, it's in the planning process. We'd have to go through all the planning. There's nothing that has been approved yet because we haven't even gotten that far. I don't think there's anything legally that I could tell you that would keep Section 8 out of a project because that is illegal. But we are planning on servicing seniors who definitely need housing. We're planning on people who are moving out of their home to a smaller, a smaller environment. And we thought having a preference for veterans, you have a very high percentage of veterans in Litchfield County, would be a very good thing to do.
I couldn't agree more.
A lot of veterans do come with problems. We understand that. We haven't gotten to the point where we've had to address what the issues would be with that. But it is in the works. We would like to be able to service seniors, and we would like to be able to service veterans.
I, I, the meeting is long, and I will stand down with one final comment to both of you, okay? We are being asked at some point in the future to vote and approve this. I know the state wants us to approve this. My recommendation would be, since we do not directly interface with the state, whichever agency or agencies is putting this together, I would like these concerns voiced to the state. If you want us to approve a plan, I cannot in good conscience approve a plan that proposes to build certain amount of housing for seniors and for veterans, knowing full well that when the city of Torrington did that in the past, those seniors were not protected. I don't, and I would love to see the state take, not you folks, clearly this is not your job or responsibility. But clearly, there should be some mechanism for people of good common sense and judgment to be able to make a distinction of why seniors should and veterans should be a protected category of people. I don't know why that can't, that can't occur, and therefore there could be housing that is specifically dedicated to them. That just seems to me, people, you know, grabbing the bull by the horns and getting the job done in Hartford, and I would, before I approve any such plan, I would like to see some efforts made on behalf of the seniors and the veterans who deserve to have some protected space for them. If this is going to be Torrington's plan.
Okay. If I just may, the senior site that, or project that we're proposing, we're not proposing through this. It's just something that we're noting is in the development phase. But just FYI, we are planning on having it be for seniors only. Some seniors may have Section 8, yes, but they still would have to be seniors.
I understand, Ms. Sweeney, but I know the Torrington Towers was also built and planned to be for seniors.
That was a hard decision that was made to let in young disabled.
And I would like to see any plan involving Torrington and approving a certain percentage of housing for Torrington seniors have some teeth somewhere in this proposal.
Bullshit.
For you people, but from, but from the appropriate state agencies to allow that to happen.
Claudia Sweeney is a liar. You're all going to be on a witness stand. I've had it.
We need our technology.
Yeah.
Okay, Jocelyn, thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. And I would just remind everybody that, you know, this affordable housing plan is nothing more than a blueprint. Every decision that gets made with regard to an investment in healthy housing, you know, this plan, I think you'll see leans very heavily on an investment in the existing neighborhoods. When we talk about those two and three family homes that are, that were built by our parents and our grandparents, you'll see this plan identifies those as extremely valuable assets and encourages us as a municipality to develop strategies to infuse those property owners with resources.
Smartly written. I understand that, Mary.
So just as you read through it, and I'm hearing the concern that the state gets to mandate, you know, what affordability is and, you know, and what the percentage of affordability is for a municipality. But I think that when you read this through very thoroughly, that you would agree that Torrington is doing it well. As we, as we exist, that we are doing a very good job with this. But there are opportunities for us to do it a little bit better. Things like as, as the ARPA committee, many of whom are here tonight, will attest when we talk about, you know, those healthy home initiatives that are coming out of our ARPA funding, you know, that provide resources for lead paint abatement or, you know, whatever in, you know, whatever barriers there are for a landlord to be able to rent their second or third floor out. So I didn't see when I read through this and when I participated in the meetings, any focus on large-scale development. There were no discussions about another riverfront or, you know.
No, I was happy to see that as well. And I, I thought this was very well done, but I apologize if I didn't make that comment or make that clear. I think it's really well done. I just have a slight different respect. I know once a plan is approved and put in place, it tends to take a life of its own. And I, and again, particularly that, that sore point with me about senior housing and people thinking that therefore you prove the, the, but it becomes morphs into something else that we clearly don't want. And I think the state can do a much, much better job of supporting townships like Torrington in their ability to be able to provide protected spaces for certain categories of people. I just don't understand why that's not doable.
Okay, looking to the Zoom room, is there any comment from council members? Okay. All right, if there are no further questions or comments on this, thank you, Jocelyn. Thank you to the committee members. And for anybody that filled out the survey in this, you know, on this plan, this is supposed to be a community-driven plan, and I'm a tremendous. this is supposed to be a community-driven plan and I'm tremendously grateful. Um, and of course Jeremy and, um, our Land use division, so.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes.
Should there have been, and should there be a, um, a vote just to note that we received it? Is that?
Uh, this, uh, no, I don't think it's necessary, it's just a presentation. But you will see on the next agenda, a motion to, um, approve or adopt the plan. So, all right. All right, then we'll move into item six. I'll entertain a motion to adopt an expense reimbursement policy for the police department extra duty assignments, having been previously approved by the Board of Finance on August sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanaro.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Minichia. So, um, just as a reminder, this, uh, expense reimbursement policy uh, is a way for us to, um, better utilize the reimbursed expenses that come with, uh, police extra duty for road construction or events. Um, specifically, the cost reimbursement for administration expenses and for vehicle use. Uh, the, um, as per the council's request, when we brought this to the council uh, two weeks ago, we did bring it to the Board of Finance. The Board of Finance, uh, overwhelmingly approved it and was pleased to see, um, a plan for putting those funds back to use, um, that will ultimately reduce the impact of budgets to the taxpayers. So, floor is open for questions. Hearing none, I'll call this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven. I'll take this in three parts. I'll entertain a motion to rescind the August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two vote to reappoint Christine Altman and Thomas Kalinowski as regular members of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a three-year term set to expire September fourth, twenty twenty-five. This is to correct the commission name. The purpose of this motion is so we can correct the name.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minichia, second by Councilwoman Cavanaro. Uh, if there are no, uh, questions, I'm sorry. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I, the, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Christine Altman as a regular member of the Inland Wetlands Commission for a three-year term set to expire September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanaro.
Second.
And I heard Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item, uh, seven C, I'll entertain a motion to appoint, to reappoint Thomas Kalinowski as a regular member of the Conservation Commission for a three-year term set to expire September fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Moved.
I heard Councilwoman Cavanaro, second by Councilwoman Rowett. Questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight. I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Michael Thomas and Dennis Bailey as members of the Veterans Advisory Committee for a second four-year term set to expire September thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett, second by Councilwoman Cavanaro. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, this is a resolution. I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution number one, four, three, two, three, four, for partial demolition and abatement of the former Hotchkiss Mill property located at one ninety-nine Water Street and two twenty-nine Church Street as further described in the Economic Development Director's memo dated August thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Kevin Arrow. Are there questions on the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item ten, I'll entertain a motion and, yes. So I'll entertain a motion, um, to accept the recommendation of the ARPA committee to approve the following grant requests. And just as a reminder, uh, the Community Impact Grants, uh, the grant round opened and closed. And the last report that I provided, I think it was Councilwoman, um, Hona that was asking, how many applicants did we have? Uh, this is a phased review of the applications. There are fifty-four applications in total. So what we did is we decided the first round or phase of approval would address those, um, requests of fifteen thousand dollars and less. So what we're working on tonight is phase one, fifteen thousand and less. So the motion I'm looking for is to accept the recommendation of the ARPA committee to approve the following grant requests. Nutmeg Conservatory for the Arts, eleven thousand dollars. The Warner Theater, Warner Arts in the Classroom Pilot, ten thousand dollars. Sanctuary Power Yoga, Yoga for Teens, three thousand seventy-five dollars. The Center for Dance Arts, Dancing Dreams, Dance for Every Child Project, nine thousand dollars. Torrington Historical Society, John Brown Birthplace, Five Points Art Center, Connector Trail, thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Culture for a Cause, His Truth is Marching On, Musical Documentary Unveiling, four thousand five hundred dollars. Joyful Noise, Singing for Mental Health Benefits, Scholarship Fund for the Torrington Children, nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. First Congregational Church, Community Food Distribution, fourteen thousand five hundred. And Drakeville Fire Department, Drakeville Launter Fry Department, capital safety expense, seven thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll move it, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rowett.
Second.
I heard a second from Councilman Cavanaro.
Ma'am, can I make a comment?
Please.
Yeah, I, um, this is, if you remember, we have a MOU with, uh, Community Foundation and Julie is in the audience there, uh, as a lot, as well as Rista, um, and as well as some of the members of that committee. Casey McKenna, Lorraine Pesky are both here. Um, and this was, I think we've all agreed, this is more than what we imagined in terms of the number of applications and the need for, um, you know, for the use of these ARPA funds, but also the process. Um, I really want to credit the Community Foundation and Julie's direction to us. Um, we, we did the fifteen thousand and less to learn, to be honest with you, a software program that, um, basically helps us in terms of the rating of these applications. And we all did it independently, um, with comments, but it was, um, really quite a process. The next batch is probably going to be more difficult because it's a larger number of, I think there's sixteen in the next batch um, with larger requests. Um, but these were all really good, um, grant proposals and I looked at the council for support.
Councilwoman Rowett, um, just for the council members', um, education, Julie, do you mind stepping up and just walking through the process of, um, review and grading? Thank you.
Thanks so much. I'm Julie Sharnberg, the Vice President of Community Engagement for the Northwest Connecticut Community Foundation. Um, part of my job responsibilities is to manage all the competitive grant making that moves through the foundation. And I have to tell you, we were really thrilled and honored to be selected to help you through this process. Um, big responsibility, a lot of dollars at your disposal. And, um, it was a lot of work to try to figure out how to manage this, this slice of the pie. And we did have some preliminary meetings with Mayor Carbone and with Rista Malanca just to sort of start to think through how, how to have the Community Impact Grants reach the audience that you wanted it to reach in terms of the for-profit and nonprofit um, organizations within the city and to try to touch some of the needs that you've seen um, and have been communicated to you. And so after those preliminary meetings, I know that the committee was formed and they were doing a lot of work because in early June, we then had a meeting and we were presented with a nice concise document that said, these are the eligible organizations. These are the eligible programs. So there was a, a long list of eligible programs that organizations could apply for. Um, they also provided a scoring rubric. And that, I believe, was very helpful. It was a hundred-point scale, um, weighted toward various, um, parts of the application. And it's a tool that's used quite widely in federal and state grant making and it's, it's extremely helpful in terms of walking through an application, seeing where it has strengths, seeing where it has weaknesses, seeing where you want to value, for example, collaboration among organizations or other aspects of the application. So it's very helpful in terms of having that kind of a lens on the application. Um, the MOU that was signed with the city outlines everyone's responsibilities, all of the things that were managed by the foundation, all of the tasks that are managed with the city. Um, we've been working very closely together. We did put it on our new grant system. It was programmed, it was tested, it was opened on June twenty-eighth and it was closed on June twenty-fourth. Um, the, the entire pot that's assigned to this grant round is one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was decided to run it in two rounds. So we had eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars recommended spending for the first round, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars recommended for the second round. As, um, was pointed out already, we received fifty-four applications. Um, I know that, uh, Rista received a number of phone calls. I know I fielded a number of phone calls in the office, there was a lot of interest in this. The city did a wonderful job of publicizing this opportunity. A lot of people had obviously heard of the ARPA funding and had been following it closely. I know that every time, I, I heard so many times, I ran into the mayor and I asked her about this. So, got a lot of phone calls on that. But, um, so there was a lot of buzz and the total requested was eight million, eight eighty-three, five hundred and fifty-five dollars. So, um, welcome to the world of grant making where you have dollars requested far in excess of the dollars you have available to you. And so in that sense, we did break up that group of fifty-four because that's, that's a lot to go through. And some of those projects, as you, as you just saw, the small dollar amounts of three thousand dollar application is going to be very different from somebody seeking a hundred thousand dollars for a much more extensive program. So we broke it into three batches. One, to get fifteen thousand dollars and under, and then we took the remainder that were significantly higher dollar amounts and we'll walk through those in two batches. But tonight, we wanted to get the smaller round in front of you and we anticipate working through those additional thirty-two applications and we'll be back one more time. So we won't do it in front of you in three different meetings. Um, those larger applications may require an interview or they may require additional information. Some of the projects are very extensive. Um, they may require a multi-year, um, timeline. For example, we, at the foundation, we typically allow nine months, sometimes a year, to get a grant done. But some of these projects that have been proposed, some of them could take two to three years to realize. All of that is within the spending guidelines of ARPA. And what's nice about having this get off the ground now is that you will have these funds committed within the timeline required by ARPA. Um, the other thing we've tried to be sensitive to in working with the city is to have the application address that these pro, these proposed programs will impact Torrington residents. And as we look to get reporting from them, once they're finished, we will be sensitive to the fact that the city does have to periodically and at the end, report to the US Treasury, the outcome of all of these applications. So we are still working on getting that post-grant report shaped up, but we have been working on it and it will be something that the city hopefully will be able to, um, rely upon if there are ever any questions from the US Treasury about how this money was spent. Um, so at this point, we have in front of you, in three separate motions, the, um, funding, we have, uh, item ten is to fund. We have two that we just off the top needed more additional information, so we moved to table those to the next round. And then we have a number of them listed in Agenda Item Twelve that really didn't fit the funding focus of this round, but the city has identified other potential opportunities for funding that may be a better fit. All of those applicants would be referred to other funding opportunities. If any of them are nonprofits, of course, they could be referred to the foundation for another funding opportunity to take another look at their proposal. And that's where we are. So now we are ready to see if you have any questions or if you're ready to move ahead with the funding proposal in item ten. Questions?
Will there be a public, yeah, will there be some, um, site or something available to the public or something else about what, what the proposed, just a little detail about specifics, what, what the grant requister was proposing? And then, you know, a post-grant analysis of what they achieved? Is, is that something that you're planning on doing?
We, this is all, we're, we're designing this as we move along. And so I, I can see that absolutely makes sense. There was an attachment to the, uh, agenda. What we do is we try to summarize it in, you know, a couple of lines, basically, what the, the proposal is. And yes, the post-grant report would absolutely be made available to you.
In the public, my reasons for asking is that there, there will be an awful lot of chatter, you know, seeing the descriptors of what these grants are for. For some of these things, people are going to say, I can't believe they spent so much money on, boom, boom, boom. And it would be nice if people received this grant. I mean, if it's something really simple for three thousand dollars, that's a paragraph. You know, it's a couple of sentences of what they did.
Right.
But more involved things should have a little bit more flesh on bones and, and therefore people can look and say, oh, I see how this money was spent and why it benefited Torrington.
Right. Uh, we've tried to be sensitive to the fact that as public dollars, there does need to be public accountability and, and public availability of all the documentation that's been submitted. And that what's, uh, nice about our grant system is that, um, all of those applications can be downloaded into PDFs. And, um, we can certainly discuss how that should be displayed, whether it's on the city's website or a separate portal, um, however you feel.
I have no doubt your team is doing due diligence and very smartly going forward with these things. And I would just, I, it would be nice if it were documented somewhere so that, again, citizens in Torrington can see, yeah, this, there's controls here and it's all makes sense. So whatever you come up with as the simplest, easiest way to do that, we'd appreciate it.
Absolutely, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Other questions?
Any other questions?
The other comment is, uh, and you could talk to anyone in the committee members because it's been an interesting conversation, particularly about the smaller ones. Uh, I mean, it's as simple as, you know, a freezer, you know, to deal with the, um, overflow of food coming into Torrington. Um, so it's been a, yeah, there you go. I mean, that's what I think, you know, Paul's looking for, which I think is, uh, important for the public and certainly for other council members. But I did also want to recognize Molly Spino, who was representing the Board of Safety and then also John Kisco from the Board of Ed. So we all had, you know, Lorraine's with the Board of Finance and Casey, what are you with, Parks and Rec? He's got in so many other committees that, um, but it was, it's been a really interesting process. And, um, appreciate the guidance, expertise, you know, of Julie and the foundation, not to exempt Guy Rvezzi, but, um, you know, it, you can tell that this is the work that they do. We could not have done this. Um, you know, I've been honestly, I have done, uh, an applicant to many as a nonprofit, um, executive for years. It's very strange being on the other side. Um, you know, but it is, um, very educational and, um, very appreciative, again, of the Community Foundation's support.
And to, um, the request for just a little more and especially for these small ones, I, I would agree, the smaller ones, it doesn't need a whole lot of explanation. But if you look, um, on this Agenda Item Attachment, page seven is a very nice spreadsheet that, uh, the Northwest Community Foundation has provided with a purpose- with a purpose of the grant and the focus areas. Each one of those focus areas relates back to what were the goals of the ARPA funding and this grant round. So to your point, we can build it a little bit more, and this is a public document. We certainly can put this
Make it easy to find something. So if anyone has a question, go there.
Yeah, exactly. Good. Yes.
All transparent.
We can do that. Other questions or comments for Julie? Or on the motion, because we are speaking to a motion that is on the floor. On the table. All right. If there are no other questions, I'm going to call the motion which was made by Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Cavanero, for the to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee to approve the grant requests as itemized A through I. All in favor? Any opposed? Item 10. Item 11. Again, I'm looking for a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee to table the following grant requests, and there are two of them. It is the Be Ready Project Adult Support Awareness Partnerships and the Be Ready Project Mosaic ME.
I'm going to move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Waldron. And are there questions on this motion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 12. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the ARPA Committee to not fund the following grant requests. And instead of read, I'll read them all. Howard's Books Pipe Trains, Sarah Roberts LLC Greens and Things Startup, Swing Factory LLC, The Swing Factory, Zoom Zoom Real Estate LLC, LLC, Tap House LLC, Sawyer's Brink's Bakery, Challenging Minds Grant Request for Ongoing Training for Licensed Clinical Staff That Work Full Time at Challenging Minds, Culture for a Cause, City Views Community Media Project, Transformative Beauty LLC Temple Salon, Challenging Minds Expansion of Challenging Minds, Torrington Library Teen Advisory Board Pizza Wars.
What?
Challenging Minds Train Indian Oil-Assisted Therapy Dog to Attend Treatment with Challenging Mind Providers. And again, the motion is to not fund these grant requests.
I'm going to move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette. And second by Councilwoman Waldron. And questions on the motion?
Have to trust the committee's judgment. I have no idea. The pizza war is very, you know.
It's a cute idea. It really is. So I'm going to make sure that they come to the foundation and you'll see.
I trust your judgment, so I will support this, yeah.
I'm looking for individual sponsors for those teens to, you know, buy pizza, different pizza locations in Torrington.
If there are no questions or further comments, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. And thank you, Julie and Rista.
Yes.
And our committee members that are here and home, probably working on some other committee they belong to. Moving into item 13. I will entertain a motion on the recommendation of the Vehicle Replacement Advisory Board to authorize the refurbishment of truck units number nine, 11, 12, 15, and 16. The contracted amount is not to exceed 22,000 per truck. The repairs would be made by Marola Motor Sales, Inc. of Torrington. And this includes a 10% or 2,000 per unit cushion for potential unforeseen expenses.
I'll move it.
They give Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Cavanero. Are there questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There is an additional motion. It's again related to the work that was being done by the no, this was not. This was, I was going to say by the Vehicle Replacement Committee. This is outside of the Vehicle Replacement Committee. Has everybody received the sheet of paper with three additional motions?
Yeah.
I would need a motion to Oh, they are. Sorry. 14, 15, 16. With an explanation of what each one is. So moving into item 14. I would be looking to, for a motion to accept the recommendation of the Fleet Manager and Purchasing Agent to purchase a 2023 Ford F-150 XL WD Supercrew with plow from MHQ, Inc. of Middletown in the sum of $60,000 funded from the Vehicle Replacement Fund as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated September 1, 2022.
I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, and second by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 15. Entertained a motion to accept the recommendation of the Fleet Manager and Purchasing Agent to purchase a 2023 Ford Ranger XL from Litchfield Ford of Litchfield, Connecticut, in the sum of $31,980 funded from Vehicle Replacement Fund as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter dated September 1, 2022.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, and second by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 16. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Fleet Manager and Purchasing Agent to purchase a 2022 Ford Maverick XL FWD 2.5 L Hybrid from MHQ, Inc. of Middletown in the sum of $24,600 funded from Vehicle Replacement Fund as further explained in the purchasing agent's letter of September 2, 2022.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Cavanero. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 17. I will entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of Corporation Council to authorize the Building Department to refund a permit fee of $850 to Lynette Serrano, owner of record of 169 North Chapel Street, as further explained in memo dated September 6, 2022. Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 18. I'll entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to act on behalf of the city and apply for a Safe Streets for All Grant Program Action Grant in the sum of $200,000 with a $50,000 cash match from the city to complete an action plan as further described in the Assistant City Planner's Memo dated September 6, 2022.
Moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero.
Second.
And second, Manichia. Questions? I think I saw Nate, I see Nate, our Assistant City Planner in the background there. Hearing no questions, I'll call the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 19. I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report from July 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Manichia. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 20. I'll entertain a motion to release the sewer use liens in Corporation Council's memo dated September 6, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Cavanero. Questions on the motion or the memo? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 21. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Tax Collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on this dated September 6, 2022.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilwoman Waldron. Questions on the motion or memo? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 22. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Tax Collector and authorize sewer use refunds as indicated on our list dated September 6, 2022.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron. Second, second by Councilwoman Ruette. Questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 23. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Around the room. Anything else this evening, Emile? Anything, Jeremy? And Nate, I don't know, the council hasn't met you yet. So I know, Jeremy, if you want to do a quick introduction of our deputy city planner.
As you know, we've had some, a little bit of turnover in our office with Marty retiring. So there may be, maybe a few people out there that I haven't actually met before. So I'm Jeremy. I was the assistant planner before when Marty was here. And so we had an opening and Nate started with us in May as the Assistant City Planner. So.
Yeah, it's great to finally attend a council meeting and see all of you. I'm really excited to be working for the city. Just moved back from New York State, so it's great to be somewhere closer to home. I'm originally from Wardstown, so it's good to be back in the area. If you have any other questions, like I said, I'm working on the Safe Streets for All Grant, so we're hoping to apply for that by September 15.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you.
And Jeremy. Rista, he's in the room. Anything this evening, Rista? City Treasurer, Dan Farley, anything?
City, have you had a CD that matured a week ago? That was earning 0.2%. So I was able to renew that at a 2.0 interest rate, which equates to almost an additional $40,000 in interest on that one CD.
Thank you, Dan. Anything from the city clerk's office?
Really, we're busy preparing for October. October's coming. We're excited. We're going to do it. Candidates are busy getting applications from us. They want to hand them out.
Thank you. We appreciate counsel.
Nothing here, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. We'll move to item 24. I'll entertain a motion to consider business by the mayor and members. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Cavanero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We'll go to the screen first. Anything this evening, Councilwoman Hona?
I don't know if Nate is still in the audience, but I do, as the officiant at his wedding, I want to welcome him back to the Torrington area. I'm sure his in-laws are very happy that he's back and happy that he's working here and hopefully he enjoys the job. And I apologize for being late. I have my executive board meeting at work tonight, but I'm glad I was able to participate in most of the conversation. So I was able to get some of my questions answered on the affordable housing plan. So I'm going to dig a little bit into that a little more before we vote next time. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Manichia?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Oliver?
This microphone never works, remember?
I know. I see that. Yeah. All right, Councilman Waldron.
It has to be in the room.
Yes, yeah. Councilman Oliver, I hear, Councilman Waldron.
Now, summer has come to a crashing end, so here's fall. I'd just like to mention the passing of Wilbert Bowles. Good man in the community. Great volunteer, did so much for so many people, Boy Scout leader. We're all going to miss him. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Nothing, but thank you for mentioning that well-respected, you know. I don't know. I mean, you think about somebody who just gives and gives and gives to the community without any recognition and you know, my condolences to his family.
Thank you, Councilwoman Cavanero.
Sure. Exactly those same sentiments regarding Wilber. Good man, very good man. And just one question, Mayor. What is the council, the purpose of this, again, maybe there was an email? I'm sure this is the drone.
That is the drone policy, because the motion and that was approved was an approval of the acquisition pending receipt of that policy.
Well, is this coming in front of the ordinance committee or is it coming in front of the council?
No, I think that was just for the council's information. I know that the council was interested in what that policy looked like. So the policy was sent to both the council members and the Board of Safety members, both of whom already approved the acquisition.
Okay. Probably the motion was not the way I intended it. I thought the approval would come subsequent to pending approval of this, that we'd have a chance to review it and agree that this was the way we wanted it.
So I did, I, when the policy was sent out to the council members, I did recommend to Chief Baldwin, who is on the line. And I see Captain Barone is also on the line. Questions on that policy? You had a chance to read it and go through it, so he can answer?
No, no, no. I don't want to just, this would be a police policy. You wouldn't have opportunity to change this, to change any of this. Okay, this is not the city ordinance.
Yeah, this is a policy that was adopted through the department. So normally, the city council wouldn't have input into city policy, police policies or regulations.
This does not have to go through ordinance, ordinance committee in any way?
No.
Okay, no. Fair enough. Thank you, then. And that would be a
Thank you. All right. I would only remind council members and members of of the public attending that tomorrow night, there is an exciting sports event happening at Fusage Park. For those of you that are not aware, we have Governor Lamont and candidate Bob Stefanowski fielding a couple of teams to play softball for fundraising purpose for the Friendly Hands Food Bank. I learned this morning that I'm supposed to play this game. So hence the sure. But it's such a great cause, and it's such a unique and fun way to raise funds for such a worthy cause. Our Friendly Hands Food Bank has been absolutely phenomenal, rebuilding its credibility and providing such a valued resource for food insecure families in the city of Torrington. So please support them and don't just pay the $5 ticket price. Be generous.
Can I ask you a question on that? In the spirit of sports betting and politics, is there a friendly wager between the two candidates?
I don't, I don't know. I stay away from the gambling stuff. But it's going to be a fun evening and all in good spirits, so I'm looking forward to it. All right, if there, oh, wait, I do have one more. I'm sorry. So I do have to reopen this meeting to the public for public comment on agenda items only, do I have a motion to do so? Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron, and second by Councilwoman Cavanero. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public wishing to? Hello?
Michael Whitaker, 6240 Fork Road, representing Drakeville tonight. Just on behalf of Drakeville Mayor, members of the council here and on the phone, and of course, the hard work that the foundation, the committee put together. Thank you very much for accepting and approving our grant. So thank you very much. It'll be put to good capital safety expenditures with our vehicles, so.
No. Thank you very much, ma'am. Oh, Lorraine. Ms. Pesky. Lorraine Pesky, 455 Cardinal Circle. Thank you so much for approving the audio visual solution for this. Having been on that side, on this side, for years and years and years. I was very disappointed when we redid City Hall that there was not a better. Back then, I was on the mode of it, and we were broadcasting our meetings on Cable 5. Cable 5, we all know, is no longer and all that. Cable 5, we all know, is, is no longer and all that. But I think that this process will be able to make sure that the citizens of Torrington have much better access to, to their government. And then, and I, you know, I used to, when I, when I was on the Board of Ed, I would see people in the grocery store the next day who would have seen us. And army meeting, Board of Ed meetings, you all know, go really late. And people would, they may have been watching through their toes, you know, in bed. But they were watching on Cable 5. And because they would comment, they would say things to me. Geez, you know, it takes you forever to get to the grocery store. I'm sure the mayor understands. But so, thank you. Thank you for doing that. The Housing Affordability Plan. Totally agree that having an affordability plan, very good thing. Not having any teeth on the part of the legislature to put behind this so that it isn't just Torrington's solution to it. When I read the newspaper and they, other communities argue incessantly over sidewalks, they, they don't, they don't argue. Well, yes, they do. Oh, and on the kinds of things that their zoning does to preclude any kind of affordable housing. And the very fact that the word affordable carries such a stigma for it. I've been, you know, my brain trying to figure out another word than affordable. Because when she presented all the different things that constitute what makes affordable housing, it isn't just subsidized housing. A CHFA loan is not subsidized housing. It's just a loan at a, at a better rate based upon that you've met the requirements. Doesn't, doesn't mean that anybody's giving you anything. So thank you for, for doing that. But we've, we've got to do better as a region, as, as a state. And, and until we do that, our schools are not going to be equal. So until every town has the kind of housing that people can afford to live in, affordable, and so that they can send their children to those schools to easily, in a minute, the, the knowledge gap and the achievement gap will be gone. But it takes the legislature, elected officials to, to step up for that. And the grant, the Community Impact Grant with the ARPA funds, it was a whole lot more work. It is going to be a whole lot more work than, than any of us anticipated. But, and I said to the other members, it was like a mom having to pick her favorite child. Because we wanted everybody to, to get their money. But having, under the leadership of the foundation, it really has allowed us to focus on this. And the, and we all kind of left it, not all of us, I shouldn't say, but left it kind of to the last minute, that first group. Because all, we've been doing all this through the summer when everybody has a lot of things to do. And I felt like it was the day before school and I hadn't done my summer reading yet, that I had, had to go through all these. But everybody was very, just for the community to know, everybody was very thoughtful. And I think almost everybody made comments on every single grant we read, a request that we read. So I think it's going to be a good process. And it is a lot of money. It's a lot of responsibility. And, but I'm thankful that for once I don't have to slap people's too many hands away because there are so many other opportunities for the, the people that don't meet, meet the requirements of this particular section of the ARPA money. But in $10.5 million, hopefully, there'll be other places for them to, to be funded. Thanks. Thank you, and well said. All right. Still up into the public. Last call. Seeing and hearing none. I'll move into item 26 and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Waldron.
Second.
And seconded by Councilwoman Ruette. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night.